I'll put you on speaker.
What did you say?
Hello, all right.
Good evening, Ms. Carter.
Good evening, everybody.
We are looking at the clock here and it's close enough to 5:00. And since you've called in, I'll just go ahead and call the meeting to order. Welcome everybody that's here. This is our workshop, our quarterly workshop with our employees, to discuss items that might later appear on our agenda. Ms. Carter, I understand that in your world that those people that you work with or answer to has loaded your card, the fiduciary.
They have. I don't want you to have a chance to talk with Judge Goodson lately. I know that you guys are friends, but Chief Judge Patterson decided rightly that it was time to clear some of these 7,000 Hurricane Michael cases out of the dock and to get things moving like they used to. Some of our deadlines are not our own anymore. We've been hopping around.
We appreciate you joining us and look forward to when you're back with us in person.
Yes, sir. Same here.
I think Margaret has some things on the agenda that we need to ask you, and I know that this is out of order with the agenda, but if it's all right with everybody, can we let Mr. Carter address those things that we need him to talk about and say the things that we need to talk about later? Is any one of you employees, are you, is your okay to hold a few minutes? Okay, we know that you're wanting to get home as well. You said you had some things there?
We were going to address the lease agreement, but that is, Mr. Jeff, I think that fixes itself. Ms. Dalton has bought a piece of property within the city limit, and she's no longer interested in the city to lease her a piece of property. She's bought a piece of property, she's going to put an office there. So that's fixed our problem there.
Well, that's good to know. That's good in several ways. I hate that we're missing out on the lease, but hopefully that's the right answer for her and for the residents, if I may make it that.
And the other thing was the interlocal agreement with the code enforcement. This was brought up several months ago, and Roger just wanted a better understanding of where we're at with the interlocal and our ordinances. I know we adopted three ordinances and the interlocal. And I know the county's got a new code enforcement officer now that has not fully got her feet wet yet.
Ms. Carter, I believe you were here the night maybe that Mr. Massey and the chairman of the board came down and talked to us about several issues. Maybe it was the noise ordinance and this ordinance, the litter or the, I don't know what you, litter control.
We adopted.
It seemed like it was a sort of, maybe it was animal control as well. But we were left, let me say I, and if the council agrees with that, then it would be we. But I think that when they left that evening, that they had done as good a job explaining to us their understanding of what we were looking at. But I took away from it end to end that we couldn't enforce our litter ordinance or our junky property ordinance, whatever the term I need to use there. But I watched the 6 o'clock news and I said, where anonymous Bay County and City of Panama City enforced theirs, they wind up with the property and tear the house down. And I can't understand why we can't make somebody clean up their yard if they can tear a house down. Well, they said that this was a state regulation. If it's a state, that means it ought to be every county and every city ought to have the same regulation. And if there's something I'm missing there, that's what I would like for you to explain, either this evening or be prepared the next time we do meet or you're with us. I need to know more about this. We've got two or three sites, and I think I do speak for the council now. These have been troubled sites, some of them for years.
Yes, sir.
One of them has been probably a place of illegal activities, been numbers of arrests made at different times and some things like that. And it's spilled out, it's not just now that it's an isol behind a fence, it's an isol that spilled out not onto the right way, but also into the paved area and things like that. And just, and then when we're asked, why do you pass the ordinance if you can't enforce? That's a good question for the residents to ask us, and even though you weren't our attorney when we did some of these, that becomes a question that I would ask the attorney. Why would you even draw up an ordinance if we can't enforce?
Well, I'm happy to speak on it. In the fireworks, taking, for instance, the noise ordinance, and a couple of practices there. And for all the bad, I think, from their misfortune, I think that I'm happy for it.
Ms. Carter, we're losing you. Ms. Carter, we're losing you.
Is that any better right there?
That's much, oh yeah, that's much better. We was getting feedback or an echo or something.
Oh, I apologize. I guess I apologize. I had these headphones on, thought maybe that would be better, but sometimes it isn't.
Yeah, you're very good now.
Okay. Going back to the beginning of these ordinances, I know some people are unhappy about, in particular the noise ordinance and the animal ordinance, but you're right, if you're looking at litter code enforcement, classic code enforcement, you know, like junky properties, people aren't keeping them up or dilapidated buildings, that kind of thing. And then the noise ordinance and then the animal control, these things are all going to be enforced by the county. And the reason that they were written this way by two mechanisms, the ordinances themselves and then the interlocal agreements with the county. So the ordinances are what we enacted, and that's our law of the town of Wausau. But the enforcement mechanism, because of our lack of resources and funds, and because the county has those resources and funds and acts in this capacity for smaller towns like Wausau, they are the enforcing authority. And that's what we had the agreement for. So for instance, but there's two enforcement mechanisms, and so like, let's take the noise ordinance separately. That's going to be a sheriff's department matter. And I understand that there are residents who are saying, the deputies are telling them that it's an unenforceable ordinance and they're barking up the wrong tree, the lawyer shouldn't have drafted it, the town shouldn't have voted for it. Respectfully, that is not a law enforcement officer's place to say or offer any of those opinions. Their job is to simply enforce it or do it. They don't interpret the law idly. They don't legislate. Y'all do. So I advised you guys about what the pitfalls that the noise ordinance was and what they were and they are. I stand by all that today, but the town wanted it and got it, and that is what it is. If the sheriff's officer is to enforce it, then that's another question that we need to make the sheriff agree about and try to come up with some answer.
And in fairness, let me interrupt, in fairness to you, because our meetings are recorded and someone may hear this if they're not present, in fairness to you, you did try to prevent or you discouraged us from adopting that ordinance in the first place because you did point out those things to us, but, and some says our former mayor got this passed, one person does pass it by themselves, we all voted. So I want you to know that in fairness to you, I don't think we're blaming you with the horses, even though we want to.
No, I understand. I don't take it that way at all. Listen, I got six skin, so.
I understand. But, okay, but you did say something there that's important, maybe something we need to share with our sheriff is that if he does respond to a call, that they need to have some answer other than the lawyer and the city that worked on it in the first place. They need to act on the evidence on the ground and then they see their, of course, I think somewhere we had to have one of these decibel meters or something like that, and I don't know how expensive they are or if the sheriff is even inclined to buy one or anything like that. But that seems to be a, that seems to be an isolated part of the town that we have that complaint in. And I would think that, well, what I would think about how a dividend should work is not necessary. But, okay, thank you for letting me interrupt, but on the noise ordinance, I think your feeling being that there's not much more that you or we can do is going to be a law enforcement situation.
That's exactly right. And it really would be as simple, I mean, I say simple, that's easy for me as I sit in my office, but if a deputy had a decibel meter and was trying to use it even one training, I think that if they were sitting there, they heard the noise, it was in an area where they could reasonably, you know, know what's going to happen in advance and be there and hear it, see it, measure it, and cite that person, that citation would hold up and the ordinance in that case would be constitutional, and we could violate that person. And I think that would have an effect on that part of town if we could just get one of them. But if we can't, and the sheriff's department isn't willing to do the things that are necessary for it to be a constitutional citation, then we're going to be kind of at odds until something else happens.
Okay. Anybody have a question from the council about the noise ordinance? Okay, we hear you and currently understand what you've just told us.
Okay. Good deal.
All right. So the other two ordinances, address them in any way that you want to.
All righty. Thank you. Moving on to, we'll call them the derelict properties, for lack of a better word, and the county code enforcement. Now, that's supposed to work under our interlocal agreement and typical custom where you have a small community, you have your enforcing agency. Typically, somebody from the, the town will get a complaint. I would say that's probably going to be Ms. Margaret or one of you guys on the council. And then if it's a council member, then y'all want to notify Ms. Margaret and have Ms. Margaret notify the code enforcement officer up in Chipley for the county. And then at that point, they're supposed to take over and handle that going forward, both in terms of investigating it, inspecting the premises, issuing the citation, and then ultimately getting it set for a hearing if it comes to that with the county's special master.
Okay.
And that's how that should work. Now, once all that happens, to answer your question, you talked about foreclosing on properties and the municipalities actually owning them and maybe tearing them down and then selling the property. Yes, once we have the enforcement proceedings completed and we have a final judgment from the county's special master, then that judgment, depending on the terms that are contained in it on a timeframe, usually within 30 days, that'll become a lien on that property in favor of the town. At that time, once we have a lien, if they don't clean it up and they don't pay the fines and they don't take care of the situation, they being the property owner, that's when the town, if y'all want to incur the legal fees and the court costs and everything, we can file a lawsuit to enforce that lien and foreclose on it and get through the whole thing like you would a regular foreclosure where you wind up having it sold at auction. And then, of course, any funds the town extends to clean it up or demolish the house or whatever they need to do, that will become part of that judgment lien and part of the money that would come back to the town when the judgment was satisfied by the sale of the property. Does that all make sense?
Yes, sir. I understand those steps. I think that depth was not explained to us before when Mr. Massey spoke to us, and I'm not sure how did he understood the depth that we wanted to go to. We just need to find an end to the same question and the same approach from the residents over and over again. And can you put a lien on homestead?
Well, okay, I should have, that's a very good question. No, sir. It's homestead, it's a homestead property. You're not going to be under, but the lien will stay on.
But we can put a lien on it, but we can't foreclose.
Exactly. So yes, you can lien it, but you cannot go through the foreclosure process if it is their main homestead residence.
But when the owner's sales or changes hands, then we can.
That's exactly right. You will be first in priority even ahead of any debtors or creditors, rather, like a bank or a lender.
Okay. Can we contract code enforcement?
Well, we are contracted now with the county. If the thought is maybe terminating that and starting our own enforcement. I've never seen it contracted out. I don't know the answer to that question. Typically, what happens, like I use Bluntstown, for instance, and I understand Bluntstown's a little bit bigger and has a little bigger budget, but their fire chief doubles as their code enforcement officer in exchange for some additional pay. And then they have their own special master that they just pay on a as needed basis. He's a gentleman that works over Liberty County, and we have a hearing that there may be three or four times a year, and he comes and does, it takes a couple of hours, and that's about the extent of it.
Okay. Does anybody else have a question? I don't want to take everybody's, I'm trying to speak. What prompted that question? Well, I know that you can contract some services. We, Bay County is contracting lots of its building inspections and.
Yes, sir. AC.
We contract garbage services and some things like that. Now, I just wondered if that was a service that might, could be contracted, if we had a certified code enforcement officer and we contracted them on a per case basis or something like that, if it was something that was eligible for us to do. And I haven't seen, when you speak again, you can enlighten me, I haven't seen, I don't, we haven't seen the local agreement yet, have we?
Yeah.
We got here.
Yeah.
That's it. Okay, we did that.
We've done all that.
Okay.
We enacted that interlocal back in middle of 2019, if I recall.
August, yeah, August of 2019, along with three ordinances, 19, 1, 2, and 3.
Okay. So, okay, then here's my confusion, and I'm speaking to the council now, Ms. Carter, here's my confusion. If we had this, I should have known or should have remembered it or something, but if we've had this for this many years, why are we still being told that we can't enforce it?
I don't know that we've been told we can't enforce it.
I was going to ask, have we gone through and have we tried to violate somebody? Has a complaint come in that we've sent to the county and seen what happened yet?
We've had one complaint that was sent to the county. We paid our fees and it's still not cleaned up to this day, you know?
Did the county ever cite her or violate her in any way, Ms. Margaret, do you know?
I don't know. They changed hands right then. They had Ms. Bruner then, and then she left, and then they've had a couple more since then, and now they've got a new one. I think we just get, we fall between the cracks when they change employees.
Well, that's my thought, and what it really seems like here, I mean, we have everything in place that we need for enforcement. It just, it looks like, and I'm not throwing the county.
No, I'm not.
Mr. Massey or any of them.
No, no.
But I think we're not getting the attention that we need on.
I think you're right, and we're not, we're not here to, we're here to see where the cracks are and what any of us can do. If it's more legislation, what can the council do? If it's enforcement, what can the county do with their enforcement department? If it's something legal, what can we get you to do? It's not, this is not for pointing fingers, it's just for clarification and to move something. If we have to move one case, I think that could go a long way in other things beginning to take care of themselves.
I agree with that. If people see that action will be taken, that can have a real chilling effect on them wanting to break the law.
Yeah. Okay, so what would you recommend from here that we do?
Well, I would ask Ms. Margaret to be in touch with Judge Massey, and I'm going to get in touch with Matthew Quay, and that way there will be two of us asking two different people who should then be talking on their end and see if we can be squeaky wheel and get us some grease.
Okay. The council is shaking its head in unanimity. We're agreeing with you, we are agreeing with you that that sounds like a good thing. It's the one case we've turned in, the one on Monroe and Second Street, which is the case we've turned in?
Fourth, Fourth Avenue and Jackson.
Fourth and Jackson, okay, so we haven't got.
Not that we haven't turned that in, that I know of.
Turned this one in, okay. All right. Would you like to, would you like to work on the one that's in before, the one that hasn't been turned in is probably the worst at this point in time, but would you like to work on the one that's, that is turned in before we submit another, or do we need to go ahead and turn in the one that is a terrible violation?
I think we need to turn it in.
Yes, sir. I'd go ahead and turn it in immediately, and that way they, that'll help our case as opposed to just some, you know, one every now and again, random thing in their mind. It'd probably be good for them to see that we have a need and we need to help with it.
Okay. Okay. And I don't know that it makes a difference if we want to be considered and compassionate, but the primary owner of the worst violated is recently deceased. While it's in transition, might be a good time for us to try to do something so that whoever comes on as the new owner or inheritor or whatever knows that there's a problem and it's got to be addressed.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. I agree with that.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Carter on our, does this help us understand more about these properties that's in disrepair and things like that? And we agree that his, I mean, we're not in a meeting, we don't have to vote, but we agree that this is the action that we would like for him to take and order. Yes?
Yes.
And any of these things, Mr. Carter, that we need to vote on next, we'll agenda them tonight, so if we need a formal vote on this, we'll do that, we'll agenda that and do it next Thursday evening.
Yes, sir. We're in good shape. We, these are just administrative decisions we're making right now, and we can treat them the same as Ms. Margaret just decided to do them, as the town clerk, so we'll go ahead and on with them right now. If I hang up, I'm going to go ahead and get with Matthew Quay via email, just so that we got that on record. I've got my side of that, but Ms. Margaret can get Mr. Massey on. Yes, she's working.
I don't care whether I'm working or not. I'm working. I'm working every day.
I guess.
Jeff, if you're watching this video, she does literally hit you. Okay, then the other one would be the animal, and I'm guessing you want to tell us something similar, that we do have an ordinance and that our way it's been forcing it.
And if I can add to that, we have no problems with animal control. Now, the resident that has the problem with animal control, he's going to have a problem with whatever we do, but when we call animal control, they come out, they do their job. There's no, Kim and Dallas can verify, if we call her 10 times a day on that same German shepherd, she's out there. We're catching that German shepherd out and them not bailing him back out is the problem. We have no problem with our animal control or, in fact, we literally, I very appreciate our animal control interlocal.
That's good to hear.
Yep. Anybody having?
I have no problems with it.
I know animal control, it's got so much better. Also, around my house anyway, I don't have a problem with it. As a part of that, is keep them in the yard or on a leash, that's not happening, so how do we address that?
Y'all should have Ms.'s emails in your name. There's no, if I understand from Lynn, there's no leash law in the state of Florida, and there's nothing in Washington County for a leash law. Is that right, Mr. Jeff?
I'm not aware of one that might.
It says Florida statute don't have one.
What does our ordinance say about you got to keep them?
Contained.
Okay, well, if people want to live down here, these animals don't need to be contained. So how do we go about, how do we go about containing?
I mean, containment, we can enact a lease ordinance, lease ordinance. I mean, those have some problems, but obviously the main for us being is just an additional restraint on top of it being contained. So the idea being is if it's not in its containment area, then it must be on a leash. But, you know, if you're not seeing people walking their dogs without leashes, if it's just a matter of the dog getting out and being out, I don't know that a leash ordinance is going to get you anywhere further, but we can absolutely look at that.
We always say, when we was going to, John and I grew up right here, Bill, you did most of your life. You weren't born most of your life. But we, you know, in the first place, I hate this coming this way. We, you know, that's not what we're accustomed to, but the dogs now and the people that now live in the community are much more into manicured lawns and garden beds and flower beds and things like that. When the neighbor's dog, the neighbor's dog used to run across our yard to get to the next yard, thought that was a shortcut, but now the neighbor's dog runs across the yard and they defecate and that dig up a prize flower or something else. It's a lot different than it used to be, and that troubles me that we're not doing it at that time, but I know that we aren't. Do you get complaints about loose animals?
No. We get the one complaint from Mr. Wyndham, but that's, we have no more complaints. You know, we had a chicken thing dog a while back, but we got him. We get them, we address them, you know, but that dog was just, I think somebody dropped him off to us and he was hungry.
Yeah. Cats, cats and things like that.
We don't get any complaints on cats. Cat's just wrong.
Don't it catch? And I'm guessing that that's.
We just have complaints from the public, you know. I know I haven't got any when I'm here, and I'm sure, I don't think Robin has got any.
So do we wait, we wait for complaints, Mr. Carter?
That's right. Yes, sir. Wait for complaints and then report them, just as Ms. Margaret's been doing.
Okay. Okay. Any questions on our animal? If we have somebody at one of our next meetings, can we all answer that here's what you need to do? You need to make a complaint, and then that complaint, I guess that complaint will have to come in compliance with the ordinance. How often do we need to review our ordinance, Mr. Carter?
Periodically. I mean, the timeframe works. I mean, for my money, any ordinance that is still, you know, constitutional or goes along the state statute, as long as it's not really old and individually old, as long as it works, I'm okay with it. I don't see a need to set anything on the clock other than the fact that I stay aware of legislative updates on the state level, and that's kind of my job to make sure that I'm catching the things that happen, and if they pertain to an ordinance and the ordinance becomes out of date because of some new development, then that's really where I want to let y'all know that and say, you know, the council would need to change something here.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any questions for Mr. Carter from the council? Okay. Thank you for addressing the ordinances. What is the next thing, Mr. Carter?
I think that's it. Oh, I have the ordinances and the lease.
And I'll stay on the rest of the call if y'all would like for me to. I was planning on it. If you have other questions on something else or if something new comes to mind on this, we can come back to it in your leisure.
I think that would be a good idea. If you, if you can listen with your headphones and do other work at the time, we don't care about that either, but I think it'd be a good idea.
Absolutely. Had to stay on, just keep my phone, and if y'all need y'all units to speak.
That sounds good. Thanks, Mr. Carter.
You're very welcome.
Yeah, I was looking at some things we might have, that's to put on, we're back in February and March, and I think that may have been those things.
Yeah, that would be, I think.
That's it. Okay. All right. Okay. Can we leave yours off then and go to our employees and?
Oh, yeah. I'm last anyway. You've got Brandon Senior Packet, his recorder, he's got a game tonight, so he couldn't be here.
Is everybody ready? Mr. Kramer's?
Should be right behind him.
He likes feeding back for sure. I'm just saying, I'm going to throw it out there if it's hard.
Okay. And why?
I guess he doesn't think he has to do anything to drag the fields. I know he's not playing up the football field after baseball. Every time we go very nice on that toilet boy, I think he's the one following it up.
And you think, and you think that why?
I've never had, they've been unlocked. We ain't had no issues until he started out there. And we've had nothing but issue with men's toilet on the concession stand getting clogged up.
Women's out.
With women's outdoor. Yeah, they're using paper towels.
They had a whole road.
Whole, yeah. So we've been making sure we've been putting actual toilet paper in there for them. And we did, we cleaned them, but it's just, and he. for them. And we did, uh, we cleaned them, uh, but, uh, it's just, and he'd been using the tractor. Uh, he wanted to use the Gator side by side, told no, because they want to burn it up. Cause we just replaced clutch in it, you know, and, uh, but he'd been using it on their tractor, you know, we've never had an issue with it. Every time he uses it, it, light comes on on the dash and straining and, uh, but we found out what it was, you know, he, anyway it was straining, but we got that fixed. But, uh, now he just, I guess he'd want to do a lot. Uh, told him he had to slow down and that he had to talk to Ms. Margaret before we did anything. Cause he'd want to paint all that up there, redo this, redo that. And, uh, I know we did get some dirt thrown in there, a bunch of dirt. We built up the mounds. I know, uh, we were trying to fix the one bathroom, little bathroom out by itself. But, uh, we think there's a clog in the line somewhere, but when we turned it on, it blew the sprinkler head right out the ground. The neighbors wanted to fix this. Somebody took the head off and it blew the little faceplate off. But we put shut-off valves on it till we, you know, turned on, shut that part off and get water to the bathroom. But, uh, anyway, he...
Thank you for you opened that little window up though. Back it up, clean it up. I thank you for helping. You know, I'm just, I, and I don't know. I, I know it got messed up originally and slowed it up.
And which, which sprinkler hit it or come in?
That's in, uh, the one by Jefferson Street, the baseball field by...
The old field.
Yeah, there's a, there's a sprinkler, uh, right there in the middle of the pitching mound. I mean, dead center in the pitching mound. But when we turn that one on, boy, it shot twenty foot up in there.
I think, I think Tom might have put it in.
Tony Hall, Tony Hall?
Yeah, I think.
Yeah, he, he said he wanted to put it in and said that he was gonna replace the sprinkler too. I don't know if he did, but I never heard back from him. But, uh, yeah, I don't think the reigning guy likes me in Dallas very much. He don't like us. Cause we also used some of the dirt he brought up there. We didn't know who it was. We used some of the dirt. We, uh, a tree fell on the little, uh, nature walk. So we did have to fix that. We fixed that and, uh, cut some of that debris back and cleaned it up back there behind the splash pad. We finally got the splash pad scraped off. That was, uh, we got all the sprinkler heads working in it. We just ain't paying to get this, this ain't packed out there.
Sure, they done ever. Imagine I'm gonna start using about ten at a time.
Okay, so, so we've got his report and we've had, we've had his input. Uh, how do we want to address this? Want to address the paper report first or want to address what the, uh, what Tim was talking about?
Mr. Johnson's been to just about every game there. Everybody's been pretty well.
Yes, he has. I really enjoy that down there.
He's got the field looking really good, baseball field.
Yeah, he drives them before every game.
I haven't had any, any contact at all about anything, what, the paperwork plays weird.
I did, I figured, uh, Steve ends up wanting to come back. He, he already knows everything that's going on. Uh, I don't know how y'all feel about that, but I just know that when he, uh, when the, when the Brandon first got here, came up talking to me and he wanted to do a bunch of different stuff and I had to come and slow down, say it wasn't my boss. Then I told Ms. Margaret that we can't just do that. That's what grades are for. And before we can just get dirt out here and do this. And he wanted to chill up and reseed the whole field, all the baseball fields and paint everything and redo all the dugouts. He can't, oh, we're in the middle of baseball season, can't do that. That's something, that should be done after baseball season. I said, you can give it yourself. But he, in the middle of me talking to him, he just turned and walked away from me. So...
Sounds like it might be a personal conflict.
We talked since then.
Might, might be both ways.
Maybe.
All right, council, speak to that. This is what we're electing. What else we got going on?
I haven't been down there, so I, I ain't been at the game this year, so I haven't, you know what? I knew, I haven't had anybody come and talk to me about anything either as far as what's going on.
I had one incident down there, but it quickly resolved, you know, with umpire and you know, well, I think one umpire and I told all pretty bad, made a crime. It got over by, by a parent or no, one of the coaches.
One coach.
But I mean, that's okay. I mean, it doesn't make good for the church sometimes. If you gonna coach, you gonna get it.
That's right. Carter?
Uh, don't have anything right now.
You don't, to address this? You don't have an opinion?
Well, not right now, though.
I don't have an issue with him. I don't work with anybody, but I mean, we've worked with him now.
Don't, don't each department have some kind of job, excuse me, what we're trying to do?
That's probably.
Work out.
It, it, it does. And I think, I think...
And, and, and actually, it don't matter to me and, and it don't matter to him. You know, we gotta, we're cleaning every day. That's our job. We don't mind. We sure don't mind working on it, which is...
Yeah. Uh, we, we can address the Steve thing. It's, it's my opinion and, and, uh, Mr. Carter, we've been calling back on that one too, but I think that we've had conversation up to move. It's my opinion that that's not gonna happen. It was like when, uh, when, uh, our previous person resigned. And then in a meeting or two, right after we started having a Pepsi with withdrawal resignation, you can't, you can't do that. He's gone. Now, I've talked to Steve. He called me this week. And, uh, and what I told him was that if there is ever an, an opening here, if Mr. Kramer leaves or at the end of his probation, we don't put him on and the position's open again, he can apply again. As far as him just changing his mind now and wants to come back, it's my opinion that there's, there's four of the votes up here, it's my opinion that that can't happen. And, and that's what I vote him.
I agree with it. Mayor, if I can interrupt, that's the right answer.
Okay. Okay. So, so now the next thing we're hoping to address is whether y'all like each other.
Mine, I just only...
And you, and you don't have to. Uh, we, we don't have to like each other up here, but we have to work together. Uh, what about, what are my concerns for a long, long time has been that, that even though we're tiny and we're, we're maybe even smaller, we're, we're all a part of each other's life and family. Uh, when we, when we are acting inside of the, uh, ordinances and the statutes and the city, uh, guidelines and all the things we do and being elected, budget constraints and, and answerability to people above us, uh, governor and, and others included, uh, we, we are held to a loss of the same standards that we would be if we were in Miami. And, uh, I think it bothers me that we act more like a club than we do a city or, or, and, and again, that's, I was here before the city was incorporated, John was before we was ever incorporated. And, uh, we may have lost something when we decided we wanted a central water system or we wanted paved streets and we wanted to be self-built. And we may have lost something when we gave all that effort of being a community, of getting a city. But now we're gonna work under city guidelines and things like that. And, uh, uh, so many times, I'm afraid, that we don't communicate that well enough to our departments. It's something when a town is going, folks always got departments assisting. Uh, and, and, uh, uh, so, uh, whether it's the fire department, in this case, the red department or your department, the, uh, worst department, uh, we, we do have to cooperate. And the departments don't have a life of their own. One of the issues that I, uh, discussed with Steve, and I think it's a matter of, I think it was in a meeting, but one of the issues I had early on with Steve, and he did some wonderful job, I agree with you. He did a great job as far as we can tell. But, uh, but, but everything that any one of these departments do, ultimately, the responsibility and/or a liability comes to these five people right here. Uh, I'm sitting here where we're, we're doing, uh, raffles and we're doing, uh, car washes and we're doing lots of things like that. Those things really should be put on the calendar and be approved by this board before...
He hadn't approved at last month's meeting.
Okay. And that's good. And, and I failed to say thank you for handing it last month. We had such a wonderful tree. But, uh, but, but that's the right way to do it, if that happened. And as far as one department being over another department, you're right, Tim. Everything needs to come through Margaret and Robin. That's the closest thing to a county man, uh, city manager, city administrator we have is our, our clerk and assistant clerk, deputy clerk. And it doesn't even come that way. But, uh, uh, as far as him using the equipment, we have, we, we probably have two options. One is to let him use whatever equipment that the city has or the other is, uh, go down there and do it for him. That's the only equipment we got.
Well, we, uh, we, we found out why it was acting up and we, we showed him, we went out and showed him what to do with it. And, uh, we told him that we prefer him to use the John Deere tractor that, cause it's made for pulling. That, uh, that little Gator just ain't gonna do it.
Now, Steve, Steve took the field from the Gator. That's what we got it for.
No, he didn't. He never did. It was torn like that.
Well, we, that's right. That's what he got it for. Uh, we never did, uh, we had that thing.
Yeah.
He had a clutch for ninety dollars from John.
We can take it where it's proven, mate.
I know that, uh, somebody used one of the zero turn lawnmowers and, uh, no, don't wanna do that. Cause I want to tear transmissions in them. Uh, but it seems we're doing fine with the John Deere now that we got it fixed.
Took that man down there, right?
By the way, we haven't had no problems. It's just, uh, that first time that we met and we talked, he just, he had a bunch of ideas of what he wanted to do and told me I had to slow down and that it doesn't work that way. We gotta go through the council. We gotta talk. I said, I don't do nothing but through by Ms. Margaret, through the council. And, uh, I said, cause he would literally want to paint everything, tear all the, uh, dugouts out, redo all the dugouts. And I told him, it's not baseball.
They're in the grant to do that, but it will be after baseball season. We can't tear them down and get them back for a game.
Is, is he asking, is he asking you to do it? The maintenance department or?
He was somebody to get more gear.
Shouldn't have been brought, uh, to Margaret.
The grant will be taken care of when, when it gets time.
Getting the, getting the maintenance stuff and all would be. But I think his thing is that Brandon is saying, I want these two guys to do, and we have to definitely get a job description because they are our maintenance people. And that building is ours. Brandon's down there to coach, organize, herd, herd the children, whatever you, you have to do and all that. Uh, I think the field maintenance, something like that was shifted to Steve because in order that he...
It's always been the red directors, uh...
To move and fix the field.
Even when Barbara was here, they had the line of fields, track of fields, maintained fields. Now, the mowing up the actual park and all that went back to, uh, the maintenance department, you know, after Steve, uh, decided that he couldn't do it, you know?
Right.
Yeah, we don't have an issue knowing doing all that. But the biggest issue that we're having right now is after games, the fields are trash everywhere. Even down at the, uh, playgrounds, gay rig bottles, I mean, there's trash everywhere.
Now, the, the next one that you were talking about, that would be yours because that's not a recreation thing. That's a park.
The next one?
Yeah.
Yeah, we fix that.
Yeah. Uh, the ones being trash, uh, that's the first time I've heard of it. Uh, I've, I've gained it ahead and I haven't been to one either.
Oh, there's been a lot. It's, it'll soon be over. It's much as about...
Yeah, it's about over end of this month. It'll be over, you know, why they're bored in the next month.
Yeah, probably around the ninth of July or something along those lines. No, it's the third of July.
Uh, what I would like to do, and I know we did this, Ms. Palmer was, uh, very good about, about this was, uh, if, when we had a, some kind of complaint like that, go down, take a picture, do something like that. Uh, if you would give me a call anytime that you get in after a game and the, and the area's trashed and not cleaned up or anything like that. Of course, if you have a game tonight and it goes to nine o'clock, I don't expect he or somebody else to clean up then. But, uh, and then, and then I suppose he's working or something like that. I don't know how, what his situation is, but the next day, he either needs to have that volunteer support that he, that he has, the coaches and things like that, or somebody needs to be down there cleaning it. So, and, uh, it seems to be every week before we have another chance, but we can, we can maybe have Brandon even come to one of our regular meetings if we need to, if we need to say something to him. We can have him come to one of our regular meetings and tell him, uh, see if he understands his job description and all that. I think I got a copy of all of them somewhere. And we'll tell him which one of these folders has seen them, but...
I can get them out for next meeting.
Yeah.
Only got two more things. Uh, over at George Rogers Park, over the fire hydrant that's outside the fence, that big old oak tree, we need it gone. Cause that limb, if it falls on that fire hydrant, it's gonna bust it.
Right up under it, middle of it.
Yeah. Under that thing.
We don't think that, all the weight's on that.
We gotta turn into George Rogers Park.
First tree.
It's the first tree right on the left hand side. There's two going in there. It's a, I mean, it's a big old tree now.
Big oak tree, yeah.
Yeah. Cause we already have one fall down not too long ago, about a week, about two weeks ago. Yeah. And, uh, that, that limb got a lot of weight on it. And if it falls on that fire hydrant, well, we gonna have a problem.
It'd fall on the highway too, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And that goes to the next thing. Uh, we got the Kubota a little back of, it's not in the deep down, there's no service line. Not service line, but the main line. I know we got two coming up, uh, service lines that we're gonna have to put in. And we don't have the equipment to do it, not without that backup. Uh, it's just, especially if you have a water leak, that, you know, that little Kubota, it runs, it works, but it kinda works how it wants to, don't it? It's very weird. It's just a work rate.
There's some of them main lines, what, seven, eight foot deep, ten foot deep?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty deep. And that's the one, like five and a half foot, six foot.
Well, that little bucket, by the way, and you dig down about as far and you about through digging.
Yeah. I mean, the big backup we had broke down down there, there's some places that it took everything it had to dig up just to get down there close to it. And, uh, that little Kubota just don't have the hump to get down there. We're gonna have the hump to break through the grass sometime.
Did we ever hear from the county yard owner, what they had? I did in, in the, uh...
We might even call Mr. Massey or Mr. Bush.
Well, he's gonna give the foreman.
He thought there was never any equipment in that. It was gonna be the trucks and motor drivers. He didn't think they were, they had any backups that were gonna be, gonna be taken out of service. But, uh, so what's, what's your suggestion or recommendation?
We need something. Cause he, we, as far as using, we had to get new shovels. Cause we broke old shovels over here, a couple of them. Uh, but, uh, even trying to use shovels, there's sometimes, you know, we can stand on a shovel and jump on it. It won't break through some of that. I mean, this stuff is hard out there. Uh, I know we had that, we had three service lines that got ripped up a couple of weeks ago and, uh, they were already out there. They had dug up. So, I mean, that, that was quick. Probably didn't hook them up the right service lines. Cause they were all hooked up right there together. But I did get them all hooked up, stopped leaking. It was internet people that came through and, you know, it was right there by, uh, the corner of David's property, right at Forest Ave. And, uh, they slid some pipes over it and managed it to drain. So it kinda helped out a lot. Uh, but, uh, we just need some type of piece of equipment that will be able to, if we have leaks, we don't have to get anybody to help. We can do it ourselves.
Can we check the state bids and see what they got so far?
That we can add. We got, we had the Kubota for how long now?
Oh, many years.
Yes, yeah. And then we got one from the county that's on, uh, permanent loan until they need to quit lending or something like that. So, the Kubota, I come here and David's, uh, here and Tim say... Tim's favor, was probably too small to begin with.
Oh, we know that.
It was way too small.
We might could trade it in, too, or something, as a down payment.
Kubota's got, they got some backups, and then it can, you know, it'd just be a open gap, there's something to it.
Well, if we can get something on the state bid, uh, I don't know if a supplier will take one on a, on a trading or not, is there any life left in the Kubota?
Oh, yeah.
After, after a while, after a while, if I'm making three hundred dollars a month payment on repairs, or three hundred dollars payment on cart payment, I'm probably better off making cart payment, but, uh, if we, if there's any life left in it, I'd like to have somebody that can look at it, bring it back to, to good repair, and we can use it on small jobs, all that, because you're talking about, it's not eight feet deep, things like that, all, all the needs that you have, probably in ours.
It'd be, it'd be used for little stuff like, uh, covert, stuff like that, but, uh, like I said, it just, it doesn't have the power to break some dirt.
Do you use any of the, the pieces of equipment with a, with a bush hog, do you do any drag mode with either one of those pieces of equipment?
Uh, we do it with the John Deere, we saw.
I remember the John Deere, I wouldn't, I wouldn't forget the factor of that, and we got three.
We got, we got the John.
But we don't have, we don't have a backup on the John Deere.
No, we don't, and he's not picking that.
Last time was getting attachment for it, maybe.
You can just kinda shoot your foot yourself in the foot there, because it's gonna be small, too.
It's still, it's still a bit too small.
I think it's smaller, not as far than Kubota, than the tractor.
It's, it's kinda like a lawn mower, steer over thing.
I mean, it's better than a shovel, but not much.
Could we, could we trade the Kubota and the John Deere, and a package, and give one piece of equipment that would serve all the needs, or do we need two pieces of equipment? Now, we, we got, we got three.
That John Deere's a pretty good little piece of equipment.
Yeah, for, you know, for, for, I mean, uh.
Yeah, we.
Yeah, it's a massive amount with the lawn, where you should bush hog that part out there.
Yeah, uh.
So that's the John Deere?
Yeah, we, we use the John Deere, uh, I know that, uh, well, it's nice not having a big backup, was that it had clam shell on the front, and all this debris, it was so easy just to pile it up and just grab it, throw it in the dump, it was, it was so nice, but, you know.
But do it by hand, yeah?
Yeah.
You know, what, that's, on which piece of equipment?
The, uh, cat, uh, it's a cat, it's a cat.
The one in county, wrong, just.
One that broke down down there at George Rogers Park.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, and, uh, once it had extended glue on it, too, and it had the clam shell, so it, it was able to get down in there, I mean, bucket wasn't, well, the other bucket was about, about, what, five or six?
Five, good, yeah, five, good.
So, but, uh, yeah, we need something like that, and like he said, we don't have to have no enclosed gab, nothing like that, but it would be nice to have a clam shell bucket on the front, make the job a little bit easier.
Have you got, have you got an opinion there, Mr. Palmer? Would you trade both them pieces of equipment?
Yeah, one maybe.
We can trade one piece of equipment, we can trade the Kubota, we, we need to keep that attractive.
Yeah, I think actually, the question is, we could trade two, but I think after this last random conversation, we're saying that we probably don't want to trade this there.
Just look for, uh, sale or something?
We need something, we need something as big, is the county piece of equipment, is it big enough?
Yes.
If it was in new condition, in, in, in operating condition, is it big enough for what you need?
You give out a little bit smaller.
Yeah, that, those guys that were, cut the water line the other day, theirs was quite a bit smaller than it, because of the machine.
Well, they were actually, maybe yesterday.
Yeah, they had them put a bucket on it and all of it.
Yeah.
What's your thoughts on that? What's his name? Well, you know, y'all know more about that, and I don't, I ain't too much on it, you can't even, I don't know.
At this point in time, if we don't have anything, we'll have to call Sunbelt or somebody to get them to bring us a piece of equipment, or if they, or if they can.
When you're serviced, you could let them, we'd let them build, you know, the cap to three, and rent one for a week, and, you know, knock them out, and then if you got any time left, do whatever you need to do, digging out the pipe, it'd be an option to go.
I know right now, if we were to have like a main line leak, we, we have nothing.
Oh, God, yeah, they know what they gotta have, we know what they need.
Same thing with service line, you know?
Treat something, you have to get something else, you know, that they need, or, like you said, if that other one, if we can't get it to work what they need it to, then we need to make some kind of decision.
Is, did the county give us that, or the town that?
No, they don't.
It's kinda just, kinda stationed here.
They might let us trade.
It's stationary, yeah.
They might let us trade it in.
If, if, you're, you're right, uh, it's kind of, it's kind of something they were maybe wanting to let go, and, and, and it's here, it's still, still tied, it's still.
It's working, you know, it's not necessarily working, you know?
Okay. What, what do we think about, uh, asking Margaret to pursue state bidding price, uh, uh, let me, let me back up for that, the two pieces of equipment, not county, not county, the county's part by ring with them as well, as well, I, we jointly have them, so taking the two pieces that belongs to the city, can they be brought up to good operating repair without spending half a roof to buying you? What would it take to break that Kubota?
I mean, they all, they ready to go right now, well.
They're even there.
They're just too small.
You're gonna dig in that line, and, uh, I guarantee you, in thirty minutes, you blow those, and.
They're just too small to handle the load.
It is, it's just too much pressure.
And the, and the John Deere?
It's jockeying, they got a backup.
Same thing, okay, wow, so, so, we need, we need to spec what we need, uh, and Tim, I, I know that you've got a mechanical background, I don't know how much of the equipment for Dallas, I know you've got a lot of experience, could you, could you help us put together?
Yeah, yeah, we come, we come, you know, for size or whatever, you know, we, we think you want out.
That's the, that's the best answer.
I know that, uh.
I used to write, I used to write specs, I wanted to buy, specs look a whole lot like.
I think that's right.
When I used to run it, pay for equipment, I used to run it, when I used to run it, well, we need to get the job done, but it'd be nice to have another backup, because you can do a lot with a backup, uh, if you have an excavator, excavator would work for the line, stuff like that, but then again, you know, if it doesn't have tires on it, better load it up on trailer, take it wherever you need it, because we'll tear the concrete up, so backup is probably what, best.
And I'm think, and I'm thinking, and we probably all are, when we talk about backup, we talk about, what was the front bucket as well, we talk about a bucket, not just the hoe, that's, that's what I think.
Throw a bucket in the hoe, and, uh, and that's what I was saying about that, that clam shell bucket, that bucket opens up on the bottom, man, it makes, makes it a lot easier.
Could we ask, could we ask, uh, Tim and Dallas to work with Margaret on coming up with specs, and then let Margaret do a couple of things, one is, uh, is, uh, talk to, see what the state bidding price is or something like that, and two, uh, shop around, if it's, if, if we have to bid it, we have to go through the formal bid, that's gonna be more than we can buy without one of the bids, so, uh, if we change, buy, if we can buy one of the, if I understand, if I remember how the state bidding price work, used to, used to work, if we find something that's on the state bidding price and fits, or we want, we can buy it, we don't have to bid it. If we don't find it on the state bidding price, uh, then we have to bid it, and then we may get a John Doe, or a John Deere, a John Doe, John Deere, or a Caterpillar, or.
Back to the world, sir.
Yeah, and, and I don't know enough about equipment, I'm sure that all of them are, are, are good, so we may have a preference, I may rather drive a Dodge or a Ford, is a Dodge or a Ford better than a Chevy or something else, I don't know, I, I don't know if y'all have a preference, and, you know, Caterpillar used to be the Cadillac of everything, but just that anybody can compete anymore just about it.
Yeah, so they all good.
Well, John Deere's the most expensive of one out there, isn't it?
Probably, 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 yeah.
Probably, yeah, it's been real proper for the last.
From their own state.
Ever since they started making t-shirts and bike ride ads.
Mahinda, Mahinder.
Yeah, they did everything.
Yeah, yeah.
Uh, the only, I only got one other thing, and, uh, my Dallas is here, so he can, you know, say, uh, that van has a knocking, so we don't know how long this, that motor from last, I know we, he did a full tune-up on it, oil changed, everything, and even the work truck, uh, keep the oil changed in it, we even put an oil additive in it, uh, and it's got a hard knocking neck, so not all the time, but sometimes, so we're taking it easy on them.
Please do.
That's good.
You got it right by me.
Does either one of those, uh, or either, either one of those in the age of, of, where they're, they've got computer diagnostic?
The van's not, the trucks are two thousand and ten.
Truck ain't got no check ins, like, so not my dad, or, I got a check ins, like, tester, uh, it did have a check in line on the other day, because, uh, I drove it in here Thursday, and it started skipping, and, so, and then, I guess, I think you never had spark plugs changed in it, so I went, I just, it needed oil change, change, oil, oil change, spark plugs, and check it, uh, check in line off, so.
I'm, I'm wondering if you got a knob, do we need to take it to someplace that has diagnostic equipment to get them to tell us what that knob key is? Do you know what the knob key is?
There's, there's a main bearing, there's a main bearing.
Like, not outrun that.
It might just be.
Got one of them four feet, or a brook, huh?
I know Fords, the newer Fords are very bad about timing chains, the timing chain guy's usually pretty weak, and the timing chain usually slaps, it sounds like a knock, but he can sit there, he can hear, he can just, he can tell it's a main bearing, uh. Yeah.
But ain't that no idea?
Okay, this is, this is what, and what it works off should be about, we, uh, that they can, that they can tell us, now the, now the problem is, what are we gonna do about it?
We pay for that, and we pay for that.
But, what frightens me is that right now, everything's tearing up, breaking down, or expanding, just about the same time we got some money, and you won't turn around twice before you will be right back where we were, we don't have that money, and how are we gonna take care of all this stuff that we want to buy, and things like that, how are we gonna pay for some of it when the money's gone?
We're gonna be very careful.
You're, you're right.
We've just increased employee, and, you know, employee hours and all that, and, uh, we need to, we need to look at the budget really close, and then see what we can do, and like I say, we'll, we'll start budget workshops, uh, in July, you know, any of this stuff, probably the cat, anything else, you know, is going to be a new budget item for the new year, they're not budgeted for this year, uh, worse comes to worse, we'll have to rent a backup or borrow from the county, you know, and they, they're normally pretty good, since we've got Dallas here to let us park, you know?
Cash in on his, his, his good name.
Yeah, I don't know that up there.
Yeah, yeah, I, and I think, I think that's what I'm, I think what Margaret said is what I'm asking us, I don't, I would not like for us not to, I'd like for us to do, if we got, if we got, got some money over here, two of us have money over here.
We don't.
But we have a budget, yeah, most of these monies that we've got are designated grant monies, we got a few things on, is it the A hour, or, or something, we got something we can spend discretionary, but most of it has got to go here, 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 it says so in a paper we signed, so anything we do, I sure would like for us not to spend any reserves, but do it inside of the budget, uh, and I always come back to this, have we ever put our money back in that REA?
Not yet.
Huh?
Not yet.
What we gonna, what we gonna do with that? See, that's some of that discretionary money, we can put it back on the line item or something we've already spent, but, but, uh, uh, we also probably need to be prepared to, to, uh, I don't think the fire department asked for anything this year out, out of the ordinary, but about every two years, they need tires, they need something, uh, out of the ordinary, or change piece of equipment, and we just got so much money to divide among all of the departments, and, uh, and, uh, this is the department that the most that the community sees that, that ever, their, their product is what we're judged on, so I'd like to see us have a piece of equipment, or pieces of equipment, if the budget will afford it.
I'm sure we can work it, look at something, you know, and see what we can do.
Yeah, yeah, we appreciate you putting those, those, uh, true convey and things like that, oh.
I got one more thing to bring up.
This is third one, this is third one.
All right, well, we're getting ready to start getting prisoners, so I don't know how many prisoners we're gonna be getting, but we only got two weed eaters, so it might be, you know, maybe get another weed eater.
They got mine.
Uh, I know we got, when I got hired on, we had one out there, and it'll run, but somebody, before I got here, put regular gas, and it burnt up the rings and the piston and the motor, so.
Weed eaters are my expenditure, so we can get.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's what's happening, worth.
Well, and I, I said, push mower, we still ain't, I don't know.
I think y'all already been authorized to go get a push mower, y'all just haven't done it yet.
I just don't know where we're authorized to go get one at, uh, because I know we went and got a couple of different prices, uh, and we were also talking about getting another chainsaw. We got one, it's about, yeah, big, and we got one that's about this size, I know we need another big one for some of these big jobs, because.
Uh, another, another, as in a replacement or an addition, too?
An addition, we got the small one, about that big, and when we get out there and start cutting the big stuff, you know, it'll, it'll go a lot faster, we got two chainsaws, because we'll get out there and we'll cut, you know, they'll run one, I'll run one, and, I mean, we, we cut some rooms back there, and that was fun.
How much, how much cutting are we doing?
Uh, I know that when we go out to George Rogers Park and start doing that, it's gonna, it's gonna be a lot of cutting.
You're talking about cleaning that thing?
Yeah, a lot, and, and that, uh, I don't know, or we're just gonna fix and get it kinda hot, so, uh, so, yeah, we just, it's gonna be a lot of cutting, and then none of that, but if, if there were the, I know that Husky, I don't know how old the big chainsaw is, it runs good, but, uh, that's one of the main ones we use, because it, I mean, it's big enough to get the job done, and, uh, I just think, might need another one like that, just in case that never bashes us.
What do you chainsaw, be in your experience, you get a chainsaw for six, seven hundred dollars maybe?
Every, everyone we've seen, uh, they're about the same price, about two ninety-nine a piece.
How much?
Two ninety-nine, I went to Lanes, I went to, uh, Clouds, I went to Trap and Spa, two ninety-nine, well, Clouds is more expensive.
Those things, if we don't have to bid, as far as I'm concerned, y'all need to find the one that, that you like, the one that you're familiar with, is all produced, and all that, unless there's three hundred dollars difference in the price, something like that, they're all compatible, a few dollars, you know, something like that, that's my opinion, that's not.
I, I just like bringing it up.
That's the county's opinion, so, yeah, I think, I think you need to find what you need there, as long as it's in your budget and urge mentor, I, we don't, I don't necessarily need that to come with the council, but I'm glad you can share it with us, I appreciate your sharing with us, and, and even stopping, stopping me up, catching me on the road, Timmy, you thinking he did or something like that, but, uh, I, I think those things, you and Margaret can work out, is that agreeable with the council? And I think that's, that's, uh, that's what we need to do. And your last one more thing?
Y'all have their worksheets in your books, when y'all get a chance to review those, they're in there.
What, uh, you said you did that with the prisoners before we did?
No, we're, we're waiting on the prison now to tell us what you can get.
Okay, and we don't know how many we can, right?
We can get up to five per day, we don't have to get five, but it's quarter, whatever Dallas and Tim wants to get.
And we got push mowers, you go, and then we need.
Gonna get some.
Well, I think while we're waiting, that's what he's talking about, they gonna need to be getting, when they come, we don't, we need to spend three, four days.
Yeah, they need work.
Get something to work with.
Well, we, we'll get another weed eater, I'll make three, and then two push mowers, that'll keep the prisoners busy, so.
Does it matter where we get the push mowers from? Do they have to be self-propelled?
They have to be commercial grade, because, you know, we, if you have never worked inmates, you're gonna be in for a surprise.
Hey, it's, uh, transform back to fourth of County, we used to have to sign it in Trenton, I don't remember why I took them, but it was on Highway Two way back there, I, I don't know what to call.
How, when they, when we do get our inmates, how will that, uh, how, how will that schedule work? We'll have, we're not gonna do share them, we're gonna have them every day.
Every day, every morning.
Every day, every. Every day, every week?
More days a week.
So, so you will have plenty to do, uh, every week for four days a week, you'll have plenty from.
I guarantee they plenty of trash.
Exactly.
Every day.
And, and it wasn't their Steve's term, I know, and, and if the grounds was not kept down there, or, or whatever, I don't, I didn't have a plan then either, I didn't get a hold of them. But there will not be any day that they have a ball game, and I know used to, after Fun Day, they would end their own money, or they walk the street from one end of town to the other, cleaned up after Fun Day. And there wouldn't be any time after a ball game.
Any, anytime, anytime we had to work in the parks, we're gonna, you know, temporary close it, should we get through.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
And then the paperwork, it said that we had to supply all the signs and everything else.
Yeah, we did.
So, I know we gotta get that too. And, uh, inmate that.
Morgan said we'll take it a couple days to get the signs, so sure we'll head over those two, it was gonna be like men working and park closed.
You know, you need, I think you need construction ahead, men working, and then, you know, flagmen ahead.
Can you, can we say inmates working?
Yeah, so you, you got to have one of those, inmate working.
The inmate group.
Okay, I won't, cause you don't know anyone, what you can say without being abusive or.
You're gonna have to have two of each one of those, so.
I didn't know if we could use the term inmate or prisoner. Imagine, yeah, something like that, uh, okay, so, uh, we need ones to close the parks or things like that, so.
If there's something, you know, we put the inmate sign up, and then we put, you know, park clothes, you know, binds or something.
What's the, what's the progress on the building down there?
On the possum patch?
No, we're waiting on People's South Bank to put some funds in our federal account. We have, y'all have done all that, we still have no funds in our account, and I've contacted them a couple times about how we need to get funds in this account, we gotta, we gotta get this grant going. Our building is waiting for us to pay for it, cause they gotta pay for it upfront, before they come put it in, and, uh, that's what we're waiting on.
I know that she probably tired of reminding me of saying, she might forget it or works better than I remember, but two months ago, I think we were told that it's gonna be delivered next Friday.
We was, until we didn't have the funds in the bank. Those funds have to be spent out of that special account, we have to open accounts for federal, and we can spend it out of general funds if you want to.
Did we know that then?
Yeah, we know that, and we're still trying to get People's South Bank on the way.
Yes, that raises a question, I know we said a week here, next week, you then, then what?
We didn't know that, we thought we had the funds in the bank by then, it was ordered, it's still over there waiting for us.
Okay. Daddys anything that adds to Tim's report?
Nothing.
Tim, is he working out for you? Don't, don't let, don't let him.
I gotta go suffer.
Don't let him. Don't let him get in your shade tree or anything like that.
No, uh, we work pretty good together, um, some ditches kill both of us. You get through one street, you jump on the other.
I think one is better than that one. That's what I got to add, let's see.
Okay, anything y'all need to ask us?
No, sure, we got, I know. Thank y'all.
Thank you for, thank you for the, thank you for the work that you're doing, both of them, Tim, appreciate it.
Y'all need to talk about, I'm sure you make me laugh, Tim.
The gals is big up in June.
In June, okay, all right.
Y'all tomorrow, we should.
All right.
I think y'all have to.
Mr. Smith is.
He's, you know, he's left there, he's started his daughter, he are, and he, he's out of town, he can't be here. They sending him out, out, out on the road.
Mr. Rudd?
I haven't heard from Mr. Rudd, so I don't know about Mr. Rudd. I can give you an update on the, most of the.
Do that, and, and see, that, that's another thing there, I mean, uh, we, we don't understand the organization, something like that, some, somebody needs to be here.
I'll make sure they understand.
That's my opinion.
My.
They're saying we're out, right?
Needs to be here.
Or back, or, or whoever.
Representative, somebody that can.
Somebody is representing, right?
Somebody that can give us an update, I'd prefer it be an officer.
All right, I'll make sure they know that, I'll send them that email and talk to y'all.
Does everybody feel that way?
I feel that way.
Yeah. All right, give us an update on it then.
Okay, all the, we've got, all the furnishings, uh, generators order, furnishings are out there, a lot of them are, uh, we would close on USDA stuff on the nineteenth of May, finally, uh, that will be closed on, and I've been emailing back and forth with USDA, you know, we had to pay fifty-nine thousand dollars before they would even attempt to order the generator, and I stress to them that we're very small budget-wise, and we cannot upfront all these monies. We don't put out a lot of money just for the tables, chairs, and, you know, seven, ten thousand dollars here and there, you know, on getting it back from USDA, you know, but I stress to them that we've got to have these funds in our account, or we cannot, our budget will not sustain upfronting these monies for this grant, you know? And I talked with Miss Mary Gavin, she said, as long as you've got invoices, there should be no reason they shouldn't close, so I emailed Miss Lacy and Shina this week, and, and they're going to swing and close on our grant loan on the nineteenth.
Okay, so that gives us the fifty-nine, what was that generator?
Uh, generator day, five thousand dollars.
But they gotta have the fifty-nine.
Up front, yeah, to get it here, and installation will be in July. But we're gonna do the grand opening before that day, but we don't need the generator here to do the, the grand opening.
Yeah, yeah.
Or the hose racks, or anything else here to do that grand opening. I think we have most of the stuff here, but, you know, we need to get with the fire department to see when they want to set the grand opening.
Grants has taken a long time to begin, they don't.
They do.
That fire department is, uh.
Two years old now, seventeen, eighteen.
It actually started when, I think, when Mr. Phillips was still on the council, but it's been going a long time, but we're, it's gonna be good when we get it, it's gonna be good when we get it. So, there'll be no other reports in fire department?
No.
We're not getting, are we getting our other reports now?
No. I can call the county and get them, but as far as getting them from them, we're not.
We had a very small, um, report, when was it, last meeting?
Yeah, uh, May, so, yeah, that's, you know, they, they both don't let, you know?
Yeah. Are you getting from the county?
When I request them, they don't automatically just send them to me. But they're advertising for coordinator too, so I hope to get one in with them. Start getting one with them.
Is that Ben, is that Rick?
Yes, Savannah's been doing it, she's been overwhelmed.
Yeah, 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 she can, yeah.
She's got me to park out of one or two.
Well, I, you know, if it's got help from the county or if it's got to, I'd like to see those from the person. And my concern continues to be protecting the public's interest, and if we bug fire, department's not making calls, and we got twenty people that we're, and, and I, this is, this sounds worse than my heart is, my, my heart is, thank God for every one of them. But we, we do the Christmas thing, we got twenty gifts, or whatever it is we give out, I, I'd like to see at least one fire call by all twenty other people or something like that.
We actually insured twenty-four.
We insured twenty-four, and how many will make a run?
About two.
See, and the law says on fire, two in and two out, if you, if we're not responding with the right number of people, that, I just don't want, well, you know, we're all, but, but we can't do that.
And I don't think that maybe five, or five shows up sometimes, a hundred in the meetings.
Yeah.
And that come from another firefighter.
Yeah.
You know?
I haven't been to a meeting in a long time, and maybe, maybe you, just to go with encouragement a little bit, I don't mind doing that. Share the media, and any of the rest of us could drop in on them if you wanted to. Okay, this, Robin, you're next.
I don't know what else best to say.
You're still, you're still catching on, still doing good?
Uh, yeah.
You're comfortable?
Morgan might play different, yeah.
You're comfortable with the job?
I am.
And the people and?
I am.
She doesn't know.
I can't break her mouth.
Does she?
Yeah, I've learned a lot.
Yeah. Any, any complaints or any things that you need from the council?
Not a complaint.
Of course. You would tell us that if, if there was, since you're her supervisor, but.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
It's doing good.
And she's here in order to just, we guarantee them.
She's here because y'all require all employees to be at the quarterly workshop.
But all employees are department here?
Department here, all employees, I think it's.
All employees, that's good, I'm.
Yeah.
Anybody got a question for Robin?
I don't.
Do you?
I don't.
I think she's doing good, anytime I come in here, she's.
You may be like, you may be like Daddys saying, you may want to go cook supper.
I, I, I'm willing to go with my, I'll start to say, well, y'all, I gotta go, y'all, I gotta sneeze. I don't want to be rude and sneeze in front of y'all.
Just go sneeze.
Thank you.
Thank, thank you.
I appreciate y'all.
Thank you for coming in for the job that you're doing.
Definitely, thank you.
All right, Morgan, how long we stay here tonight?
Well, I'm ready to go.
You're, you're next.
Okay, we're gonna have my report first, uh, the water system experience they're billing, technicality this month. Uh, new bills will be going out. Oh, it's just a, it's a learning experience, you know, and it's nothing that anybody did or whatever, you know, it's just, it just happened. The new meterings didn't get sent over to the billing system, so we're sending out, uh, a paper bill that's saying, hey, we made a mistake, this is your bill. We talked to the auditors, talked to, um, everybody that we needed to talk to, the auditors are here that day, we've had them for two weeks now. Probably get nothing else done, but, uh, we, uh, what they said to do was to rebuild and go out, you know, and send an explanation, charge no late fees this month, just, you know, some of them owe us stuff, some of them will have a credit next month, you know? But that's what it brings on that.
How much did that cost us?
Hmm, it cost us, quite a bit, in paper stamps and, and.
How much did the system cost us?
The system?
And it grew.
This is operator, you know, it's called, it's just a mirror.
Okay.
Yeah.
Operator, inhales?
Uh, yes, sir. But, like I say, we're in a learning process, and, and we'll, we'll get it, we'll get it done.
Okay.
It's not that we can't overcome, most of the bills are minimal bills anyway, it's not really a big deal, but some of them, you know, were. The potable water project, which is our well, is, uh, I just got an education this afternoon, it's been signed by the state, so we're fixing to go on that grant. The Second Avenue drainage project has been fully executed, we're gonna go out for our P's, for engineering and administration, uh, at the nineteenth minute. Uh, I done told you closing on the USDA project is going, I'll be next week, or week after next. Uh, we're still waiting on invoice on the washer dryer, the hose racks, and a few other major pieces, equipment, but we're gonna get our funds from that, we're gonna expend those and close that out pretty quickly. One thing I wanted, uh, uh, some things that Roger wanted to, I have no update from Kevin Parker on the sign yet, we're still waiting on him for that. Um, the emergency alert system through Washington County, that's, uh, we've done our maps to where we go, we're going south of Ben Road, we're going uh, east of Finch Circle and around Finch Circle, north of Hating Road, and out to, uh, Anglin Barfield's area, west of Braden Road, and south, you know, all around us, and we've set up that, that, um, when we call Washington County, they will put out an alert, most of our, she said, no, we're not gonna put alerts out to y'all for Fun Day, or these activities and that activity. I said, beyond this time, we will utilize this as being for an emergency system on our water system. If our system goes down, or if we're gonna have a cutoff, so we, we need to do system maintenance, we'll send you something on that, the water will be off this period of time.
Yeah, evacuations.
Yes, and if, you know, if we have a leak, we'll notify them, hey, we've got a leak, the system's gonna be down for a while, we'll flush when we get through. But that's all set up and ready to go.
And, and you're gonna be, you're gonna be the person calling, and it's gonna be the river business, however.
Well, we have ours, and my.
You got a number?
I do.
No, I mean, a number of them, it's gonna be, it's gonna be six two oh one, or?
Six two oh three, yeah.
Six two oh three, okay.
And, uh, on the water plots, uh, Ruston, they still not got out and done the coping on that. I don't know if y'all want me to contact somebody else and do it, or just wait, don't need to come out.
I, I, just want to get.
Yeah, he's still aware, yeah.
Lost.
Our, we, we submitted our first, uh, report on our ARCA funds, uh, we got submitted all time, we're good to go on that. And that's about what I have on my report, now in your package, you have the collection review, and I can go and tell y'all. These are, these are.
I can do it.
You should have, right there before.
I just saw it, I just had it, I would just add it.
Look on the fourth, right, yeah.
What's this rural water?
That's gonna be, I, I wanna tell y'all, that's gonna come up at the, may meet for adoption, this is an asset management fund, there you go. Okay. And I've also printed you out, you know, to show you that most of these people are making an effort to pay. Everybody's going through hard times right now, some of these I'm not worried about at all, we cut a couple off, um, and they're, they've come in and paid, uh, some of them. Um, we have three of our customers that are going to go to the D.E.O. Uh, at the end of this month, through Tri-County, there's a program that's out to help our water system, uh, recruit. Um, and one of those is gonna be sixty-three, uh, fifty-two, sixty-three, and two twenty, um, two forty, two forty-eight. Those are going to go to, uh, the, uh, D.E.O., and they will pay up to a thousand dollars on their bill. These people have been through some really hard times, and, and I understand that, you know? It's hard times for everybody right now. But most of these will pay by the end of the month. And, and as I said, Robin is a much better collections clerk than I am, she is working all of them.
You know, those should cut off, does that?
Yeah, they come in the next day with their money, it's a Robin.
Yes.
And when they, when they cut off, we do collect through connection.
We'll charge it on the next bill, we'll not collect, then we'll charge it on the next bill.
Okay.
But like I say, she's a much better collections clerk than I am.
Okay, uh, I see some that runs across our four, four lines deep.
Yeah, that one is, the first one there is, uh, she's wanting to be one of the ones that, uh, goes to the D.E.O., so it's number sixty-three. Most of those that are in the three and fours, they're very qualified for our D.E.O. program.
Could you, uh, I, I don't know what this program does, would it let you put an address or something on there? They mean these names I don't recognize.
Yes.
And, so I don't know for, or is this, is this, is there one of these for everyone of them?
No, there's not one of these for everyone of them, there's two of ones that, um.
I like the tone, now these, Robin probably knew four people that were sold them out, and that's.
Most of these that are on here, uh, there's a few tenants on here, but most of these are, are.
Talk to me about one thirty-eight.
And she's one through, uh, chemo, uh, she's not working right now, she'll be probably one of the ones that'll go, that there ain't some qualified for D.E.O. too. The D.E.O. program is like the, they have to get with the light bill once a year, you know? But this, this water is an ongoing, cause it's a COVID-nineteen fund, you know, that they're gonna get this ongoing to help them restore.
Ongoing for a while?
Ongoing for a while, yes, they'll, they'll pay.
If we ever get a, all tears for COVID, then they'll have to go back and pick up their water bill?
Uh, yes, and they're gonna have to pay the garbage part out regardless, you know, they, it's not gonna cover, it just covers water, you know?
That thirteen thousand to link, that's, that's way, way up again.
That's including the current amount due here.
That's how much it's supposed to be.
What you see is, uh, you know, uh, twelve hundred dollars of that, or, it's, it's a Tom Thum, or twenty-one hundred dollars of that Tom Thum, they'll pay, they just ain't got it yet, they're switching systems.
And is that one is, uh, one hundred and sixty-four five?
Which one's that?
The one thirty-eight.
That's Tom Thum.
That is Tom Thum.
That's Tom Thum, E.G. America's Tom Thum.
I thought you said that.
No, one thirty-six is what you asked before, oh, you asked me about one thirty-eight, that's the Tom Thum.
And you, and you give me an answer on one thirty-six?
I gave you one answer, one thirty-six.
And hers is not so bad?
Not so bad.
Okay, okay, okay. What about two forty-five?
Two forty-five, she had a major leak, that's one of them, I think it should take six months and, and, yes, but then, she's gotta ask us for that first.
It appears that it was a major leak.
It was a major leak, I got. There was a major leak. Our guys finally fixed it. They started Percy. Uh, but she pays every month. She doesn't miss, on the third of the month, you're gonna get a check for her for a hundred dollars. And that's absolutely what she can pay, you know, and I, and I understand that, you know. She pays a hundred dollars every month, whatever, and has had a credit for several months until she had the leak. And some of them, like, you know, the two-eighty-two, Robin will text them. They'll come in, you know. The two-sixty, she's gonna be here, uh, tomorrow with hers. I told her, call me, I'll come out again. And, uh, I said, the two-eighteen, she's been very ill.
Judy, so.
No, two-three.
Two-twenty-seven. If Robin will still take you to that.
She's one of the ones we logged and she's come in and paid. She was logged. Her in two-forty-eight was logged.
So it's a mixed number.
Yeah, those are both logged. And our ninety-day customers are four thousand eight hundred and eight dollars in the best.
I don't have to like to address this whenever time we come, but we totally, again, says.
Yeah.
Curd, it's curd, it's curd. We're gonna do it now.
And like I say, by next quarter, you're gonna see a big difference because we're just getting stuff going as much as we can. A company like it is, and I made it off right quick.
So this is gonna be kinda like that system that you're talking about. It's gonna be kinda like what Tri-County does for elderly. I think for their life bills, I think once during the winter.
Yeah, or any of those.
Get it, and then once during the summer, I think they do.
This is a little different program, what they're telling us. You know, we've had several webinars on it and all. And they're just, uh, the last email I had is, is by the end of this month, they will be sending out to take the applications, you know. Because I told them, I said, we have three to four that are in desperate need of help that are going and, you know, that are very low income here.
I'm like, John, I don't know a lot. I don't know a lot of these people. I don't know where they live, they live.
I've added something with addresses on everyone on your packets for the nineteenth.
What, what's an average bill?
Uh, with water and garbage, it's usually around, uh, if you look, things are some average bills, a fifty-five, a sixty-six, something like that. Plus, you know, that's with garbage included there.
I'm average.
Mm, you're average, you know. Family of four, you know, sixty.
So minimum is?
Fifty-three ninety-eight.
Fifty-three ninety-eight, you know. Mine's about sixty.
Mm-hmm. You wash a little more.
When I turn the water off.
Yeah.
So I'm about, mine's about average.
Mm-hmm.
And you know what? When I look at this, if I see two or three columns deep, which we said we didn't want to happen, whether or not on average, I, I won't have as much warranty you do, bad economy or something like that.
There's one here.
But if I'm not able to, if I'm not able to afford a sixty-dollar water bill, I'm not gonna run, huh, a two-hundred and thirty-dollar water bill. I'm gonna turn the water off, not spend on the yard or something like that. Or if I can get three months there and it's two or three hundred dollars, I'm gonna figure I need to check around and see if I've got a leak to give them a big time.
Now, I put a leak on the cars.
I don't, I don't. I mean, that's thirteen thousand dollars. You take that thirteen thousand dollars and trade in on the backhoe and you're about got it.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So there's, there's the cost of the backhoe that we got out there floating around that we don't.
Yeah.
See, anybody got a question or a comment or?
I'll have it in your packets, so.
What did we say to Morgan and Robin about bearing down on the, I don't want to get put by bad people, but.
Well, the ones we cut off, the, one I was sort of, she was, you know, the one I know cut off, she said, I am not mad. It's my fault. I said, yes, it is. Because we've texted you, we've emailed you, we've said, and you've said, I'll be here this week with this amount. This week, and I have a call up by the end of the month and you didn't show, so you're logged, you know. And I say.
Right now, I'm, I'm in favor of you doing the log.
We text them, we call them, we do everything we can.
If most of these, is any of these got a partial payment on there? See, that's what our problem used to be. They owe, they owe sixty dollars and they pay forty. So they got twenty-dollar balance.
Yeah, it is.
Next, next month, they owe sixty and they pay forty. Now they got a forty-dollar balance. And that's how that gets away from us.
Yeah.
Maybe we need to say, yes, we'll take a partial payment today, but if you're not.
Paid by the thirtieth.
By the end of the month, we're gonna block it. Yeah. Okay, go ahead with your reports.
The budget versus expenses, they're gonna be in your packets for the nineteenth meeting. I don't have those yet. We've had offers for three weeks.
Okay.
They're trying to get by two-thirty, you know, we've got, it's kind of a bit.
Okay.
And I think that's all I have. Other, you know, yes, the Michael, we've got a new round. I know grants, we're overwhelmed with grants right now. You're working us to death for grants. But while these monies are coming down, we need to take advantage of them. There's some mitigation monies coming through for here in Michael. Uh, they have to mitigate. Uh, I talked with Fred Fox twice a day and once yesterday. It just come out, but they're a few by the intent, you know, so we gotta work hard. We gotta work fast. Talked to Cliff also about the list of what the projects could be. He says that in his opinion, who was on the list that we can choose from to get funds, that we mitigate our dirt roads. The least you can apply for is a half a million dollars for land. The most you can apply for is forty-two million, which is a fine grant. But the least you can apply for is half a million. But Core Land is point four-two-five and Oil Drive is point four, and then Monroe Street. But those are, those two, those roads are in terrible need of drainage projects.
Absolutely.
And Fred said, even if we had to buy money for holding ponds for these roads, you know, you can fund that. Buy a piece of property for holding ponds. But Cliff says that would be the easiest thing to mitigate of our, he said, we don't need to mix resurfacing in with paving, you know, because, but he said, and I said, we'll vote on it the nineteenth, but go ahead and be working us up something on it. But he said, the best mitigation project we have on that list is the dirt roads.
I'm, I'm in favor of that and even the extension of, uh, Ole Road out to the city limits. Ready and they need to be done. I've got a work company in a hill too.
Yeah, yeah.
But I believe Mr. Parker will say that Ole and Core needs attention.
Yes, we do.
And that's what I told Mr. Fred. I said, we have a pocket of sixty-something residents out there on those two roads, you know.
We, every time it rains, a, a gutter washes out of my house and that's less than two inches of rain.
Yeah.
We got a half inch there today, real quick.
Yeah.
Bass runoff washed the roof out.
Yeah.
There's just some drainage out there, you know.
No, no, when you first turn off Core and, and go through that first deep, that's just, that's just, if the red roof had, it must just stay right in the middle of the road because he don't have any sand.
Core Lane's worse.
Yeah.
A lot worse than Oil Drive.
Yeah.
But they both have drainage problems and they both have, but that's where Cliff says the best thing.
But I think our chances of getting, is it a competitive grant or if you apply to get it?
It's only independent, and we're mindful of it. It's only ones that can apply.
Okay, let it hit everybody. I mean, Gov, Washington, Jackson, Holmes a little bit.
Not much of Holmes.
Not much of Holmes, not much of Gaston, going that way, not.
Mostly Calvin, Luke, and Walter.
What about our grant money from Hurricane Sandy? About twenty inches of rain.
It's pretty much different. I asked Cliff about that too, and that's Mr. Parker's area of expertise. He said.
And they don't communicate.
But that's all I have.
Okay, but we all read, do we all read it?
I do.
They all, they all, the agenda on the dirt roads, yeah, yeah. Only consent should be mine for the dirt roads. I agree with that. Mr. Porter?
Oh, I already said, yeah.
Ms. West?
I don't have anything, nothing, none.
Uh-uh. One was covered by. No other things for the workshop? Uh, the things we've discussed now will go with the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, unless there's like, uh, let me make sure that the guys come back with something or you deal with your equipment. And we're, we're gonna look, but if anything else going to consent agenda. Mr. Jeff, are you still with us? Hello? Jeff?
Thanks, sir, bud.
Yes, thank, thank you for staying with us tonight.
You're very welcome. I appreciate all of it.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
Thanks, sir.
Look forward to seeing you soon.
Yes, sir. Have a good evening.